Not allowed overtime. So, everything I'm sharing with you, there is no overtime in my budget and there's never been any overtime in my budget. An example of Memorial Day weekend, maxed out on vacation, so I'm thinking I got a spot with no cellphone service, but that's not the case. So, as I left Thursday after our meeting, because I'm maxed out on vacation, I yielded over the weekend, seven text messages and 10 phone calls. My on-call had more of that and dealt with threats of school violence on Tuesday when everybody comes back to school. I had my office manager, who was on vacation in Agnes before she left, who also is doing my compliance checks for me, to make sure that all stores aren't selling to minors and have their stuff, put her shirt on before she left Agnes and did a compliance check before she drove to Gold Beach. I have another sick employee who, we placed a kid in Portland and she's getting messages because he ran around, he's 14, and he's in downtown Portland instead of back at his placement. And then I have my prevention person, who also manages to go do an amazing showing at the Azalea Festival for all the prevention work. And again, that's not overtime, that's flex time. You figure it out. You figure it out in our department, that's how you do it. But, that's the reality of the juvenile department and how we operate. So, again, couldn't do it without them. The 41%, it's in there, and I attempted it, and I don't think it's realistic. Because if we don't have people, those other revenue sources I just told you about aren't realistic. I can't have two people in the department and still do prevention and still do outreach officer and all that. So, if 41% hit, in reality, what I would do is I would probably give like my six-month notice. I would let them know that I'm going to look out of county for another position, and we would try to figure out how with one and a half people, I mean, I don't know. It can't run. I am loyal to my employees. They are amazing public servants. I will take it before they will take it. They provide for their family. It's vital that they be able to stay here and they be able to do what they do. My salary is the largest, and I got to be honest with you, I'm not going to be in a county that's going to have a 41% cut and is not going to have law enforcement and is not going to take care of the youth in their county and have them. That just, I was born and raised here, but that just does not interest me. I will give it my all for it to still operate and figure what that's like, but it's not going to function with one and a half people. I just explained to you what it looks like with five. I don't know how you reach out to another county. Coos County's in a pretty bad way, so I don't know what that looks like. Jay and I had that conversation a couple, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if, you know, the DA is also our DA, so when his budget cut, I don't have an attorney. We take juvenile cases to court, he is our attorney. We're not law enforcement. So, when the deputies are cut, those are our deputies. Like, we're all public safety, so when all those are cut also, we're cut also. So, I think you would probably have, this doesn't accurate because I was trying to be positive last night at 10 o'clock and figure out how we could make it happen, so I left that revenue in there. That revenue can't be in there. You got to take that $400,000 additional revenue out, and you would have maybe one and a half people, and I don't, I don't, you absolutely couldn't function. Ed Kena, I will get you those exact numbers. And like I said, I was trying to be positive, but I think I need to be, I think I need to be realistic. It's not realistic. You can't even do a safe transport at 41%. And again, I know it's minor, but I also feel my role today is to make sure that you all are aware of everything we do. So, my staff does fundraising. There's another fundraising line item in other stuff. My staff holds monthly Yahtzee and Bunko tournaments, and every ounce of that, on their own time, and every ounce of that money goes into youth services. We use it for kids' clothes, to pay fees, to get them shoes, if they need shoes, or hygiene equipment. In this year, they've raised over $2,000. Everything in that youth service building is a grant. So, again, I feel we understood the assignment three years ago. We are bringing in all the revenue that we're capable, and I know this is beyond bringing in revenue, but I just think it's very important that the county knows, that you all know we're looking at those avenues. I believe there's more avenues. I believe there's been some discussion in Lipsec, that's the local Public Safety Committee. I think there are other partnerships that some of the agencies can do to bring more revenue in, and I think that could cover other stuff. I can go through this in detail. I think you can see, I think you can see the numbers that are in here. I've made some notes on the side, just so when you see something, when you're going down, I guess the first thing, the ODOT, you'll see there's a $44,000 ODOT, that's a grant from ODOT for us to do litter patrol. We make money on that and kids have jobs. I oversee it and we, it's a good investment for us, but if I don't have people, I can't do it. You'll see at the 30%, the truck that we purchased would need to be sold. That's about the only way I can save people. I'd rather have an employee than a truck. When you get to the bottom, you will see the ADPEP, TPEP, I'm still in revenue, but the note on the side, that's our 10% we get from having those grants. Then you'll also see the opioid fund, where I put $100,000 in there, whether it be for an outreach officer or whether all five of us over there have to split the duties. And then I have the personnel services in there. I can't, I can't cut, I mean, like most of these budgets, we don't have office supplies to cut. 30%, 5%, I would even have a hard time cutting expenditures. But, we're talking numbers. I mean, there's not that many office supplies in the world. Our detention is $20,000, and for the first time in probably 10 years, we are going to be over budget in detention. When you have kids with guns, wearing masks, running around town, and it's public safety, until we can figure out a program for them, there's only one place for them to be, for community safety. It's not a choice. The last resort, we don't like to lock kids up. It's a last resort. If you steal something, you're not going to detention. Detention is strictly public safety. We've had a lot of out-of-state kids end up in Curry County. We have to place them until they can go home. So, again, I just don't have any wiggle room. I've messed around with transports, but if you're transporting to Douglas or Josephine, you'll see some of the line items and expenditures, there's nothing in it, and there was last year, and it says grant received. It's because those grants I told you about include money that will cover these services. So, again, we've tried, we've tried to do that. And I know, and at the very end, I know it's the cost of doing business for all the services, and I focus on my budget, but I do have to share with you, it's a hard pill to swallow to cut $150,000, $200,000 out of my budget, but then I have to increase the count of services of $53,000. So, really, I'm not cutting $150, I'm really cutting $200,000. And I get it, I just wish there was a way, like that that part wasn't in my budget. I wish it was doing services down below, and when the juvenile department has to cut $100,000, I cut $100,000, not me cut, and then the cost of all those services go up. That's just, it's kind of a hard pill to swallow. I did put a copy in here of our, it's our prevention grant. It's already been approved this year, and that's the one I was telling you from the state. We do have wiggle room there. As far as when money comes available, we can jump on that, but we never know until money comes available. We've been awarded additional opioid money, but we haven't found out the amount of that yet. The final page, it's just some data, and it's just showing you in the last three, to, the thought of losing any of my staff, I just can't imagine. Prohibition officers aren't something that you just train, and the amount of work that everybody's taking on right now, that experience, you just, you just can't get. On that cheery note, questions?
So, Wendy, I just want to say, first of all, thank you for, I know that you and your department go above and beyond, absolutely. This last page with these numbers on it really speak volumes. And I also know that you're not seeing the same kids today that you saw even over the past five years. Things have changed quite a bit. And what you're doing is a big piece of public safety as well, so. And I also want to say thank you for giving us these three options to look at. Very much appreciated.
Quick question. Well, first, a quick statement. The stats that she put at the end. Yesterday, you were provided with a narrative that would accompany those stats as well. So, it would be yesterday's sort of stuff, handed out, and yeah, it was in the form of an email. One, so, help me, help me, help me with this. So, in the budget book, the budget book is missing from my calculations, including the $12,000 and $4,400 that you said were not included, but expected revenues coming in. I calculate that from your expected revenues, non-general funded revenues, the book is missing $142,400.
So, they're missing the $100,000 from the opioid funds.
And then the 22.
And they're missing additional, we will have a carryover of $40,000 for ADPEP, TPEP. I think when this budget gets settled and Kena gets all those numbers in there, we're going to have a carryover. So, when people are on maternity leave, I cover those duties, so we still get paid from the state from doing those duties. So, that money is still sitting in there. So, that is the money also, and then?
But that's not in the juvenile, that's in the ADPEP, TPEP budget.
Right, but it will come over, it will.
Transfer.
Right, we just have to figure out how to, how to transfer it. So, that's the additional funds. We didn't.
So, just on my calculations, not including the ADPEP, TPEP transfer over, I have $142,400 that's not included in this, in our budget book, that is included in your budget submittal of revenues that we didn't capture. Now, if you take, again, this is just my math, if I took the general fund transfer in, and I took 41% out of that, that number was 187,926, which leaves us a net minus $45,000, which may essentially be covered by the transfer in of ADPEP, TPEP, right?
Well, I think so, but some of the numbers that were in that budget were not accurate. Like, they pulled money out of irregular, well, you can't do ODOT, but not pay your irregular salaries. And then money was cut from on-call, you have to have on-call. So, I think there was some expenses in there that were changed that aren't realistic.
Okay, but.
This is last year's budget?
No, this is this projected.
Oh, okay.
But, I guess, I'm trying, what I'm trying to relay is that with the revenues that you went out and gotten, you are really close to covering the reduction out of general fund, replacing the reduction out of general fund. It looks like at 30%, it's almost a wash.
At 30%, I can do it, for maybe a year. I can do it.
That's my question. So, is this one-time money?
No.
No.
So, all these grants will, are renewable that we're guaranteed to get going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
The key with that, though, is I have to have the people.
Correct.
Right, if I cut people, cannot provide those services.
Correct.
And I think the amazing part of what we've got ourselves into, it can grow. That's the one part of the Oregon budget right now that's growing, and that is prevention.
Okay.
And it is a really good partnership with the juvenile department.
Perfect.
It's a really good partnership.
I think what she's relaying to is not the resources required to go past a year, it's the amount of energy that it would take, the people to do the amount of work that we're being asked to do with the reduction. Because normally, I'm assuming that with this additional money, it was planned to bring on an additional person to do those jobs. So, this additional money to do the additional work will be placed on the individuals who are already working. And your fear is that burnout is your?
And not just burnout, the ability, I mean, I just explained what memorial looked like to you, and that's not doing any of these new things. So, it's just, you know, in three months, I don't know, I hope these numbers don't go up, but it's very, very alarming of what we're seeing. And so, community safety would have to be our first, and I am not going to contract with the state if we're going to not fulfill, you know, I'm going to make sure I fill those obligations. But, on a positive note, I believe there's growth there, Jay. I believe that this Oregon Health Authority partnership that we're creating, I believe it can expand. And, yeah, there's people involved with that, but it still pays part of me, part of an admin, and this is, this is new. This is something in the last, you know, $60,000 of that just came in the last two weeks. There's another one that came today. And I still believe, I know there's two huge grants out there, one that will come in July of '25, that could actually work for the Sheriff's Department, Juvenile Department, that could actually be kind of a community service concept, and it's not competitive. It is for Curry County. It's just going to take somebody to sit down and do it. I think, I think we're unique. I'm not like some of the departments that can't expand and do that. But you have to have the people, you have to have the people to do it. But, yeah.
Does, does this proposed staffing that you have, does it have a community individual?
The, the job description I did for the community outreach person, they were going to do community service. This eliminates, we only had community service right now, 25%, and that's not there anymore. But the, the job description of the outreach already had that component into it.
Outreach officers, also your community service officer.
Yep, level-one probation, all the drug and alcohol. They would be in the community doing opioid outreach in the schools, and they would be doing community service work. And I don't know, you know, more discussion could be had with, you know, the Sheriff's Department on transport-type stuff, too.
How does, I just got a quick question on that. So, when you're talking about that, can you give us a little, I just need more, I need more explanation about how you interface with the Sheriff's Department on that kind of transport and what?
Well, that's what I don't know. I think if they do transports, I mean, I don't know if there's, at one time, I think they shared with me that maybe they had a retired, I think the last meeting we had on that grant, there was the concept that it could potentially help the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and the juvenile department. And it, like I said, it's not, it's not a competitive process, it's just not.
We want to work on that.
Well, there's, I'm just sitting here thinking with that community service. So, one of the things, they get, they get money for the litter patrol on ODOT, but we could also piggyback and use excess park revenues to pay the juvenile department's community service worker to assist in community service projects with parks, especially if we're looking at social security parks, because the majority of the youth that go to community service are located in Brookings, and they could be helped cleaning that area up. And then we could essentially help transfer some parks revenue into that department to offset the cost.
That's a great idea, yeah. And we have a real need for that down there, too.
Doing that, and that could essentially, will potentially make up the $45,000 difference if we get to that.
Okay, so try to hold off on the old six-month notice.
Yeah, well, you know, after 20 years, I would like to believe that I deserve to retire here. I believe that I've put in my time, but who thought we'd be having this discussion?
So, I have a couple of questions. So, the 10% cut, this shows a six FTE, right? Five current and a potential outreach officer, correct?
Yes.
Sorry.
So, 10% plus the $144,000 of additional income equates to a net plus one?
Yeah, it'd be with, I'd be funding that outreach person.
Yes.
The 30%, yeah, the 30% is no outreach, it's spreading. And sorry, Kena, I've been playing with numbers.
Believe me, I'm seeing them in my sleep.
I was still changing them at 10:15 today.
I get it.
Trying to work magic.
So, I'll let you look at that, sorry.
Well, it's, it would be five. Brittany's listed on there, but she is under the ADPEP, so it still would be five.
Okay.
She is totally.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, she's not, she will be totally in that ADPEP position at all.
Okay, so.
And it, I mean, it's feasible by next year that two of those could maybe actually be, like that outreach position could actually be under the prevention also.
Okay, potentially for, depending on grants.
Part-time, it could be funded part-time through that also.
Different grants. So, this does bring up a disconnect that the county has with department heads and grants and finance. So, everything has very much been done at department, well, not every department has been going out and searching for grants, but financial-wise and budget-wise, there's very much a disconnect as one department doing something and the finances not reflecting that. And that's something that we need to work as a whole to make sure that finance is aware. Ultimately, the county is responsible for every grant contract, whatever, that comes through. You three are responsible for those. And if we don't account for those correctly in our finances, that's where we get into trouble. And this doesn't reflect some grants. She did tell me verbally about grants and stuff, but in past, they're not reflected. And so, we need to make sure that, as a whole, we collectively know about those grants and such, so that we can have good, accurate reflections as well as transparency and documentation of it.
There is a, there is a separate, there is a separate line item that called other grants.
Yes, yes.
And they all are in that.
And those other grants, we need to, they should never be lumped, which you and I have talked about that, yeah. That we need to be very aware of how we're putting things in the budget and make sure we're transparent about that. So, because, you know, she has come up with money that nobody knows.
No, we've, actually, we had this conversation a couple of months ago when we were discussing the grant process, and I don't think that in a few years past, they have been going through the appropriate grant process, which is request permission from the Board of Commissioners to apply for said grant, and then when grant is received, the Commissioners then have to approve receiving the grant, because then you see the terms of the grant and what the county is going to be subject to those terms. So, a lot of that has been lost in there?
Yes.
Am I right to end?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just had it be a non-flashback.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks. And so, so we're getting that process fixed, but, but a lot of these funds are not grants. They're IGAs, MOUs, and court fees. So, some of them are grants, some of them are actual dollars that you receive for service provided, so.
Correct. And regardless, we should have a list of those in finance.
Sure.
Of every dollar coming into this county as a finance, you know, base. And that's, that's the lapse that we, we have, and we should have, and that's one thing I went over with our auditors when they were here about a month ago, is that we, we need to have a record of all those within the finance department that we can reference and make sure that we're spending appropriately and, you know, because we're the check and balance, essentially, so.
And, and just to clarify that, so, I did go talk to Ted about the small grants, right? If they were received, the checks were just deposited yesterday. So, then, at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, it will go before the board to accept those funds. So, that is.
So, we've already received the money?
Yes.
Just got it yesterday. Just, literally just got it yesterday, yeah.
And that, that's another thing, before we put the money in our bank, it should, because you guys should have the opportunity to say yea or nay before we accept the money, just because of past historical stuff.
Right. And those are, those are all processes that we're going to have to.
We're working on them.
We have to clean up.
We're working on them.
But we'll get there.
But I appreciate you being proactive and creative and, and coming up with money for your department.
This is a good example, this is a good example of what that question from the floor yesterday about, about, you know, you can't understand why, why are all, why are all, you know, why are, why are these departments all being treated the same when they're all different? Well, it's, well, they are different, but I mean, this is a, you know, this is, this is a department who's taken the initiative over the long term, too. It's not, it's not just, you know, there's, there's a difference in, there's a difference in saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to take, you know, Lifeboat Drill right now, because we just were alerted about it. This is a thing where you recognize that, that funding is an issue long-term, and you address it, and you've been, you've been addressing it, and it continues, you know, it's, that's what all of these departments do need to be doing. And, and so then, that just makes the Budget Committee's job even harder, because you have just more stuff to figure into your equation. Because what's 41% of what in that, what she just described?
So, currently, my math, you would be essentially entitled to receive $267,100 with the 16-4 that you just got notified about receiving, the $12,000 and the $4,400.
Yeah, but I can't, those are, those are service grants, so it, we wouldn't profit from that. That would strictly be almost like in-out money.
Pass-through.
It'd be pass-through. None of those included personnel or payroll.
Yeah.
So, that, that money would strictly just be, it's, it's really resources for youth, is what that is.
So, okay, so.
Well, and it took away, like, we used to have $5,000 for UAs. We don't have to pay for UAs anymore because we have a grant that will pay for them. So, I reduced expenses, but it's not revenue.
But it is offsetting expenses.
Absolutely, yes.
Which, that is, is the same factor. If you're not paying five grand for, then that's five grand that.
And that's something I'd like to work with you on, on introducing a pass-through line to show pass-through revenue coming in and pass-through expense, so that we can easily identify those dollars that can't be spent. They're just going to be dollars that are coming in and going out.
No, 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 they're, they're not pass-through. That's, I think, the wrong term. They're, they're, they're materials and services. So, the, like, for the $4,400, the cost of expense of doing the UAs was, because our mental health.
My best guess.
Okay. And then, on the finance line, on yours, I just need a little clarification.
Yeah.
Is that, does it show up on the, in our books? If we walk through that just a little?
Yeah, so, that, that was the increase I was talking about, is when you look at last year, it has it broke down between finance, payroll, council, and all that. The, I think off to the far left right here, the right here, it shows last year with those alerts.
Right.
And the amount we got this year is just a lump sum. It wasn't broke down.
Okay.
And so, the new, that's, that was what I was talking about earlier, the new amount. I think it's $23,148 per full-time employee. So, that, that's the money, and I don't understand how that all works.
Sure.
I won't even pretend to.
So, one thing I just want to, just to put out there for you, to put in perspective, and I'm not picking on any one department, but if we look at last year's finance, just the finance line item, you're, you're charged almost $10,000. There's another department that was only charged $2,300. The next is payroll and HR. Somebody was charged $4,100, and this department was charged $978. And then, we've got council. You were charged almost six grand. This department was charged $1,300. That's what we corrected. We corrected that there was inequitability across the board with departments being charged. So, the cost of doing business is this, and now we have an IT department because of our hack and some accurate budgeted numbers. So, we have this lump-sum amount, and it's allocated across FTE, across the board. So, that way, there's no favoritisms across funds. There's no, you know, some departments were paying up the wazoo for occupancy costs when other departments weren't paying anything. So, this makes it universal across the board, that everybody's paying the same amount based on the cost of doing business.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's why.
Absolutely not saying the process, this was a really tough year.
Sure.
To make that change, because like I said, it, it cost me $53,000. So, when I have to get rid of 150, I'm not getting rid of 150. I'm getting rid of 203. It was just a tough year.
Absolutely.
To, we had to decrease, but that increased. It was very tough.
Yeah.
Is that, sorry, did that, that one's beyond my control. So, I said, I want that to be a separate one. If I have to make. If I have to make a cut, I just want it to be my.
No, I get it.
My services. And I, and I, and I know that we always have something going on, and I know, Mr. Alcorn, when you were three years ago sitting here, and I shared that, too, it, it will be nice and had conversations with Kena to have a real budget process.
Yes.
I feel that this should start in January, that I should not have to make decisions that affect this whole county in three days, that's not responsible, it's not respectable. I mean, I, I would encourage, if it's this committee and the board, to, I don't know if it's a, it's a policy that everybody has to hold by, whether, but for the last three years, it's not just been because of budgets, and we should have been done before the IT hack, but I would say, because it does, I mean, you know, the comments we make at the last management meeting is, you know, we feel like we're in a Hunger Game scenario, and it shouldn't be me against them.
No, it shouldn't.
It shouldn't be, but we feel like we're coming in here fighting, you know, for our departments, um, when that, so I, I look forward to the future where it's not rushed, I don't think this process should be rushed, I think it should be organized and structured and a lot of thought process, and it should start in January and not all be here. And we say it's not personal, we say that all the time.
Yeah.
But it's personal. We're talking about people, right? We're talking about people losing their jobs.
But we can't talk about people till we know how much money we have, and we didn't know how much money we still have.
No, like I said.
You're, you're right, but it's, it's unconscionable and, and, uh, inexcusable the way that this place was being run for the last three years, and so, let's face it, that's what, that's. But, but now, we're at a point where we can go forward, and, and also, I want to say thank you for, um, unjustly subsidizing my office to the ten to six thousand dollars last year, because I don't.
It sounds like, and I obviously didn't use that, I hope I have a credit.
I don't think we did any work for you, maybe, maybe like fifteen minutes worth, but thanks. That was the whole point of why you wanna, why, why it should be equitable.
Yeah. No, and I understand, um, this is a very short turnaround, turn and burn budget process. In a perfect world, absolutely, the following year's, uh, proposed budget should be on the tails of your supplemental, you do your supplemental December or so, January, February, you are rolling on your next year's budget, and that, um, that is absolutely my goal for next year. We won't be waiting till the very last minute.
I would echo that sentiment of being ahead of the ball, even with the levy on the docket.
Absolutely.
And the budget without the levy.
Absolutely.
But then, I'd also, I mean, thank you, Wendy, um, the proactive approach for your department is incredible, so.
Any more questions for Wendy? All right, thank you.
Is there, like, I have work to do. I mean, if there's more questions for me, will somebody, I don't need to stay here.
Yeah, no.
We'll just call you up.
Thank you, Wendy.
We'll get a new.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
We're gonna be working through everything. Okay, so, um, let's jump down to veterans. So the veterans' budget is, um, under community development, which is in R. And in the information that I provided you yesterday, um, I provided you a, a revised budget, cutting the additional percent that needed to be cut, um, ultimately reducing this down to a one-point-two FTE. Tony?
So, good afternoon, good morning, everybody. I'm Tony Vought, Curry County Veteran Services. This year, I'll be coming up on my tenth year, so this isn't a new process, it's always chaotic every year. Looking forward to a process in the next years to change to make it a little bit simpler. Tried to work with Kena this last week to see what we could do to reduce the budget to what you guys asked for this exercise. Unfortunately, the only way before with the last exercise was thirty-one percent reduced, Addy to go to, uh, the grant department for fifty percent of the time, which is my other coworker. With this asset you guys do now, it reduces her twenty percent, which is roughly eight hours a week. So the little paper that I gave you, I try to keep stuff pretty simple, I'm a factual person, um, shows new awards for this year versus, uh, one person versus two persons. So four million dollars plus in awards for clients in Curry County comes in, the veterans in this county, with just me. With me and Addy, it's over seven million. Since I started, our office has generated almost forty million dollars, considering that we have roughly three thousand veterans, and that number fluctuates over the last ten years. I roughly see maybe a half of it, um, of the, the clients that come into office, Addy sees the other half. I couldn't imagine doing it without her, honestly. Um, she is the PR person, she's the person that answers the phones and talks with the clients and has a softer approach. You know, my job's pretty simple in the sense of, you ask, what is it gonna take? Well, any widows that come into our office usually deal with Addy. Women claims, like MST military sexual trauma claims, those are claims that Addy specializes in. I deal with more of the physical attributes, so if you have a bad knee, a bad back, PTSD, I, I take that on. Just like every other department will say, there's a, with the decrease that you guys are asking, there's obviously gonna be loss in services in the sense of not a fast turnaround time for calls, or emails, or bills being paid, or appointments and stuff like that. I get roughly a hundred and four thousand that comes in a year from ODBA due to the lottery dollar, uh, grant, I think it's Measure, sorry, numbers are floating through my head, I think it was Measure ninety-six back in like two thousand, uh, I wanna say eighteen, seventeen? So out of that grant, roughly ninety-nine thousand comes from the state for lottery dollars.
Is that, is that mic on?
Yeah.
So Tony, currently, Addy is, um, carrying the weight of the, the widowers, the sexual assaults, domestic violence, that type of.
Correct.
What would happen if she?
Uh, there would be no, I mean, I can't say no, but there would be very minimal women that would come into office, um, that would file claims. There would be, uh, I mean, I could still file the widow's benefits and stuff like that, but I figured she gives a softer approach, so, um, that's why she was geared for those things. Um, she was previously a teacher, so she has a real nice soft approach and is able to deal with these people and be compassionate. But the military sexual trauma thing is starting to really push in regards to claims, that there's a lot of women and men that are coming forward for these claims in the last few years, so, um, that is a big portion of what she does, and she's very good at it.
What's the, um, remind me, the, the certification to be a Veterans Officer, what's it called?
You have to be a CVSO, so you have to go to a state, uh, in national training.
And Addy is trained?
Correct. We're both accredited.
Right, so, and it's, so it's not something that just somebody off the street can come do?
You need a, a minimum of two years.
Okay.
I, I think the fastest they sped it up was a year and a half, it depends on when they start, but a minimum of a year and a half, you have to go to at least two state conferences, and then there's a national accreditation. I have a national accreditation with Addy because of the budget shortfallings in the past years.
Okay.
So I'm the only one that holds the national accreditation.
She has a state?
Correct.
At point five.
That's what she is, at thirty-one percent.
Is it, is that, is that doable?
That would be great, that's what I'm asking for, at least.
Okay.
Because the only way we were able to subsidize that is having to work with the grants to see if there's any additional funding, but unfortunately, when you look at funding, there's not many grants that are available for veterans, um, like one or two, and they're usually very small amounts, two to three grand type thing, so.
And so, you know, a lot of these, just as I'm looking, like, a lot of these, some of these other budgets we've been looking at are, are really large budgets. When you look at this budget and you talk about this, um, the difference in, we're talking, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, is the difference between having, uh, the function, the functionality and, and the non-functionality?
And that big, big functionality.
Sure.
Big difference.
And I've always tried to do the ask of, every time you've asked me to cut my budget, this was the hardest one as well, just like all the other departments will say. I know this is an exercise, but it's hard to think that I would only have it for eight hours a week.
Right. So.
Also in the stats, when you look, you'll notice that, that veterans do comprise a large portion of our population.
Yeah, in Curry County, they're twelve-point-five.
And, uh, and also the, uh, survey, when we went out to the survey, uh, people were very pleased with the, uh, veteran services that they were receiving from, from Curry County, in, you know, so that's just something that everybody should be aware of.
Yeah, the, um, the survey, we surveyed, uh, several of the mandated departments in terms of how the community valued those departments, and the highest value was the...
I was gonna, not, I didn't want that to reflect on Tony's review.
The highest value is on veteran services.
Really kinda hurt me.
Per the community's, uh, survey of county mandated departments.
So these new awards, the, the four million and the seven million, those are awards that you have been able to help veterans receive benefits from?
Correct. So if a veteran comes into the office and say they have a near-back condition due to the military, there's a whole morigren of what they have to do. Starts with, you know, going to a doctor, having a current diagnosis, that doctor giving a nexus due to the injury that they sustained, saying if this is even feasible. Once they do that, we file a claim, I can go through an appeal process, this can be a seven-to-ten-year process that it can take, you know, going through the appeals from the different boards, from BBA all the way. But most of them, the ones that we try to file, are the streamlined version, which is called an FDC claim, a fully developed claim. And that's where we have all the backup documentation that correlates this injury they sustained in the service, plus current medical documentation that says, hey, we believe there's a possibility that this is a contributing factor from their injury.
Okay.
When we file that, that goes up to the state, they have to see a doctor, again, for something called a CMP examination. If that doctor has a favorable finding saying that this is a likelihood, they could award them, and that award can stem anywhere from ten percent to a hundred percent, which is anywhere from a hundred and thirty-eight thou, or a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month to thirty-eight-hundred a month. And then there is other things like special monthly compensation that can go on top of that, special monthly pension, there's different awards that they can get for it, so some veterans can get in the uptune of fifty-five-hundred a month.
So you ultimately, in the last ten years, have helped the veteran citizens of the, the county receive almost forty million dollars of income.
And it hasn't been by myself.
You and Addy?
Addy has been there for just about five years now. Originally, I believe, two and a half years ago, she came full-time.
Okay.
Before that, I've had two other part-timers.
Okay.
Which were, for the most part, receptionists. Uh, one individual, Jesse Williams, that worked here in the past, was really good. She moved on to a different, uh, program, I think she was a VSO herself for maybe six months. So it was me, and then Jesse for six months, and Addy for the last two and a half.
Wow, that's impressive.
And then you figure IT crisis, COVID, you know, I had a back injury at one point, I had a knee replacement, so, you know, and while I was out, Addy was the person carrying the office. I was out, oh, six months, I believe, with two knee surgeries, back-to-back, where they broke my leg, so, and she carried it.
So, just so everybody has a kind of, you may already have a solid understanding, but some people at home may not. So just to clarify, the veteran services officer, um, and basically is, is, is the, the main go-to resource for veterans who are seeking to, um, identify a claim or wa, or, or assist through the, the veteran system, whether it be the VA, or whether it be to go get claims, could you expound on that?
Benefits that they're available to, so it could be, for a homeowner, they have to get a certification, certificate saying that they're an eligible, eligible veteran to get that loan, you know, uh, meaning you have to be honorably discharged.
Yeah.
Depending on the timeframe you serve, there's certain date requirements with days that you have to be active. So that's one piece, it's the same kind of requirement for healthcare enrollment. There's like thirteen different qualifications, you could be healthcare eligible, so I'm the person that facilitates that paperwork and sends it to the state and gets their backup documentation to substantiate that. There's service connection benefits, like I said, for an injury, there's pension for low income, there's widow benefits for a veteran that has passed due to a service-connected issue, there's widow's benefits for women that have had very low income, you know, like World War II-era veterans, which is a very small, annuity-based program that they have. There's education benefits, GI Bill, there's Volk Rehab, there's tax exemption, it's, which isn't actually a tax exemption, it's a percentage that they get if they're service-connected at a certain level, there's hunting and fishing licenses, there's preference point letters, um, I mean, there's an array of stuff that they could apply for. So basically, uh, I joke and say my job is the triage. You come in and I see what is available to you, if you qualify, and nine times out of ten, somebody comes in for one thing and that's not what they're eligible for, so they might have two or three other things, or they might not be at all. You know, so it just depends, and we go through it.
Because that system can be fairly complicated.
Daunting, yes. And I'm a veteran myself, and that's how I actually got this job, was the previous VSO was my veteran service officer, so that's what got me interested ten years ago, was, it was kinda like the hair club president, not only am I a client, but I'm the president. Yeah, that was the joke about it. She was really good, and she now works at Northern Oregon doing the same thing again.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you, guys, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tony.
So it's a little afternoon, how do you guys wanna, how do you guys wanna proceed?
We've still got quite a bit to do, don't we?
Um, we have, I see, um, we've got IT, we've got, um...
All right, Natasha's given me the thumbs up, so Budget Committee is back on the record. And Kena, it's back to you.
So let's go to planning and survey our budget.
Is that in community development?
Community development, correct. Planning is the very first one, being community development. So this budget, just to start off with, as the director of the direction of, Director of Operations, we have already made cuts in this budget significantly, so we did not make an additional 41% cut because we, like I said, cut significantly.
Been working in other county government in the state, it was very clear to me.